And commission meeting for the city of Longview is now called to order. At this time, we will have the invocation and pledge allegiance by Commissioner Chad Harkey.
Please bow with me. Dear Lord, thank you for this day and all of your many blessings, and we just thank you for the opportunity to come here and serve the community, Father, and we just pray for everyone's safety and we just pray for everyone the rest of the week, Father. We pray for wisdom as we hear these cases, Lord. In your name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. The next item on the agenda is the minutes from the last meeting. Have all the commissioners had an opportunity to look them over? Anyone have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Citizen comment is a portion of the meeting that's set aside for anybody in the audience that would like to speak to something that is not on part of the planning and zoning agenda. I have no cards, so evidently there's no one wants to make public comment. Going on to consent agenda, we're now on the consent agenda, item number six. Items on the consent agenda are plots that meet the requirements of the city of Longview subdivision ordinance. They can be approved with one vote unless there is someone in the audience or the person who's asked for the zoning or one of the commissioners want to be pulled. Does anyone like to have this item moved for discussion? No one? I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Going on to the regular agenda, the purpose of the meeting is to hear any testimony of those in the audience that want to speak in support or in opposition to the applications that are before the planning and zoning commission. Tonight is the first of two meetings. The second meeting will be by the city council on May the eighth. And the order that we will do this, the public hearing will be open and the testimony will be heard, first of all, from the staff, then the applicant, then the general public, those that want to speak in favor or those that want to speak in opposition. When all sides have spoken, then I will end the public hearing and call for a vote. Going to regular agenda, item A. Angela?
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application S twenty-five dash O two filed by Scott Williams requesting a specific use permit to allow a restaurant with a private club in general retail zoning district for lot one, block one, Bob's Place Units one and two located at three twenty-two East Hawkins Parkway. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for the onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages in addition to beer and wine at this location, which is zone general retail as shown on this map. A specific use permit is required to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Back in 2016, a similar specific use permit was approved for the property directly to the west, which was a restaurant, Fuzzy's Taco. They received an SUP to, for onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at their location on Hawkins Parkway. Hawkins Parkway is classified as a minor arterial roadway and is maintained by the city of Longview. This type of development is appropriate along this roadway. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map and surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions at this point? I do have a speaker card from the applicant, Mr. Scott Williams. Do you want to address the group?
No need unless there's any questions.
Any of you have any questions of the applicant? Okay, I'm going to call the public hearing, call it open. Is there anybody that wants to speak in support of this request? Anyone want to speak in opposition? If not, I will close the public hearing and call for a vote.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passage unanimous. Going on to B.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z twenty-five dash twelve filed by Tomas Garcia and Maria Sanchez requesting a rezone of lots seven through eleven Hughes addition from two family TF three to general retail zoning district located west of South Green Street, north of Hughes Street. The applicant is requesting a rezone of this property. Currently, there is a vacant building on the property as shown here. Let me get to my aerial maps. You can see the building. The building actually straddles the lot line. A portion of their property is currently already zoned general retail and then the rest is zoned two family as seen here on this zoning map. So if you look up to the top portion of their property, a majority of their property is actually zoned general retail and this bottom portion is zoned two family, which allows for duplexes. The applicant is proposing an event center at this location. We did get a letter of opposition that was emailed to you and you should have a paper copy as well. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future lane use map, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. So I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
The property they're zoning there, what is the use of it now, Angela?
I believe it is vacant, but the letter states, the opposition letter says that they're operating in there. They should not be operating in there. But I don't know what the previous use was. I know previously it was part of an overall property. Let me go to the aerial real quick. It was actually, this property was part of the house to the direct west of it.
But the house on Green Street is not part of the property?
No, not anymore. Apparently it was sold off into three different sections.
Commissioners or the rest of you have questions?
Yeah, Angela, how do y'all determine the delineation between general retail and housing? Any type of housing, like whether it's multifamily or single family? Like, I always try to put myself in the homeowner's spot if I'm, you know, living across the street or wherever this gentleman's living in Hughes Street and I'm living in a neighborhood believing it's going to stay a neighborhood and all of a sudden they want to do zoning change for retail.
Yeah. So he is going to have to go through site plan review. They will have to do buffering. They'll have to put up a fence. They'll have to do landscaping. If you're directly adjacent to residential, there is buffering requirements. There are some of those protections that are going to be required. Is that what you were?
Yeah, somewhat. I just, anytime you get in that area, it's kind of a sensitive topic when you try to put yourself in their shoes.
You think that would mitigate any of the noise concerns that?
I honestly?
That were in the letter?
No.
Everything in that area is actually single family, is it not?
Yeah.
I drove by there today.
Yes, based on site visits there, yes. Everything out there is mostly single family.
Like when this was all addressed back, you know, four or five years ago, whenever it was, when you look at a neighborhood like that and then you see that GR on there, what do you? What's the train of thought to go, you know what, this should probably all be residential because it's all around it is residential. Why would it be left a general retail? I can understand if it was like on McCann or somewhere where it's more apt to be.
So this has been general retail since 1981. If you look on our map, I guess in 1981 it was rezoned, that portion. I can't remember what it was rezoned for, but it was rezoned in 1981. And I guess the previous owner, when they owned all of this property, just left that there. And then when it was sold off, you're left with a metal building that is partially zoned general retail and partially zoned two family.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about the traffic in the event of a venue? I mean, do we have the system in place to handle the traffic going in, coming out?
So when they go through site plan review, our engineers at that time would review and see if it would be required, a traffic study would be required. On something this small, I don't believe that a traffic study would be, but our engineers would make that determination at that time.
You already answered the question about the noise.
Yeah, so we do, there is a nuisance ordinance and it is very vague. It just says if it bothers you, you have the right to call the police department. And so those neighbors do have the right to call the police if the noise were ever to be a nuisance to them.
Do we have?
There's not a decibel or anything like that. There's not a finite measurement. It just says if it's a nuisance.
This gentleman mentions noise currently.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any record of, you know, police reports or anything?
I believe he has spoken to staff and he has said he hasn't called the police, but he is, it is very noisy, I believe, is what we were told.
What the use right now?
With the current use, that is not supposed to be.
Yeah, they're not supposed to be in that building.
So the owner of the building owns that property and they now own this or have acquired it or, I mean, it's on two different lots?
That is correct. At one point, the family that owned the house directly to the west owned all of this property. They owned the entire block from Hughes to Marion to Green. They owned all of it. And I guess at some point when they sold this property, they sold it in pieces.
Is that a house to the north on Green? North, northeast?
On Green, on the intersection, at the intersection, there is a house there as well.
And north of that, north of that building?
North of this building is a laundromat.
Yeah.
It is a commercial building, a retail building.
Anybody tell us the square footage of the building that we're?
I believe the applicant is here and so they could tell you if they know what the square footage of that building is.
So they currently, they currently own the property that the building resides on today?
Yes, they own where the metal building is. They do not own either one of those homes.
Can you show the property line on that building?
It's hard to see, but let me see if I can show it on one of these maps. So they own, you see where the green lines at?
Mm-hmm.
They own those lots and then they own that larger lot to the north. And so that's all that they own. And then somebody else owns the corner where Hughes and Green are and then somebody owns the house, the larger house.
Let me go ahead since they're trying to speak to open the public hearing. I do not have a speaker card at this point. I'll open the public hearing on this. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak in support of the request?
They're the applicant.
They're the applicant. Applicant, would you tell us what you're planning on doing here? Need to state your name.
Okay.
Your address and please speak into the microphone.
Okay. My name is Maria Sanchez and my personal address is one twenty-one West Edgefield Avenue. But my property in seven forty-three South Green Street.
I would like this property to be more professional for a building for small parties.
Is the property already being used for parties?
Not at the moment.
Can you tell me the size of the building?
The only thing that she knows at the moment is fifty times a hundred.
Fifty by a hundred, is it what she said?
A hundred.
Commissioners, do you have any questions with them?
Yes, would you plan to develop the site further with additional buildings or expanding on the building or just using the current structure how it is?
At the moment, we are satisfied to use it as it is. Within time and looking up how our progress, if the small parties work, we will like to go ahead and maybe expand it a little bit. But at the moment, we're just focusing on remodeling it and getting it stabled more it can be used.
So Angela, that house at South Green Street, right there on the corner, that's not theirs?
That's not their property.
So the guy that had the letter is on Hughes Street?
I believe he lives directly to the west.
West?
It's the large Hughes house there.
The big house? That's the guy who wrote the letter? So I'm just thinking.
Or to the east, I guess. Yeah, to the east, sorry. I keep saying to the west, but he lives in the large house to the east.
So he's on Green Street? I thought his address was Hughes.
No, west. I'm sorry. I'm just, I can't get my directions right today. West, it is to the, it's the large house to the west.
Okay, so he's the one that had a question about it or whatever?
Yes.
And so if he's getting noise from there, I'm thinking about those people right there on Green Street. Across the street there too. And I, I want her to understand that we're always pro-growth, but when you get into putting something in a neighborhood, it gets real sensitive because people, and you can tell her this, it's just a real sensitive deal because it's predominantly a neighborhood with the exception of that laundromat that's pretty far to the north.
And staff didn't mention this?
If this guy, if this one neighbor who has complained about, or in his letters talking about the noise level, he's pretty far over. This other house is really close and especially if you're thinking about enlarging it. And I'm just throwing this out there. I mean, you could zone this multifamily, duplexes, whatever, and be more like the rest of the neighborhood. But I think you're going to get maybe even more opposition. I wouldn't be as inclined to be for it because if I lived in those houses, I never would have expected that to go general retail, especially with something that might be a little loud, you know? But just let her know, you know, whether it passes here or not, it still goes to the city council.
And this was mentioned when we met with them. The noise was a big concern.
Parking as well. Have they met with the residents? I know a lot of times in instances like this, they'll meet with the residents and so.
Yeah, we did, we did mention that as well.
Makes sense to table it. Maybe give them a chance to do that, address those concerns and then.
Yeah.
So?
Anybody else have questions of the applicants?
I have a question for Angela.
Okay.
So all the, it looks like all the houses in this neighborhood, is it correct that they're single family use, not duplexes?
That is correct. Even though it's zoned duplex out there, most of the homes are single family homes.
Most of them are very well kept homes.
Yes.
Right, including that one at the corner of Hughes and Green that's zoned multifamily?
That is correct. To the best of my ability, it looks like a single family home to me when I drove by it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you all. We may call you back in a minute, but we appreciate it. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to the request? Please approach the mics, state your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Angelica Carmichael and my address is one two five West Hughes Street. So the house that you're speaking about, if you wouldn't mind putting the map back up?
Yes.
I'd appreciate it, is the big white house that you all are referring to. This picture I feel like doesn't really give it justice as to how close that building actually is. And just for a visual, just assume that you are my house and that building is maybe at the end of that window. Just to give you a visual idea of how close it really, really is compared to how it may look on the map. In addition, the lady that lives at the end of Green Street, that house, that building really butts up close to her. And I've had multiple conversations with her and she's been pretty upset also with the noise. I like to be a good neighbor and I think like most people, you try to get along and be a good neighbor. But currently, that property is being used with heavy equipment. And if you drive by, and as maybe one of you said you have driven by, there is heavy equipment use there. So in the morning time and late afternoons, that equipment is also going, which is fine. I used to be a business owner and I understand the importance of wanting to have business. But there's a place to do it. And when I purchased my business, I purchased it in a business community, downtown where there are businesses, not in a residential area. So when I purchased this property, I thought I was going to be living in a residential area, not having this concern that, as you guys have all brought up, a noise issue. And the property has had multiple parties on it. And being, again, a good neighbor, I don't want to call the police and hinder them with constant noise complaints. And I'm not the only one that has complained about noise complaints. We all want to have a party, but there's a difference between having a party and having a party venue. And the noise decibels, what my idea of loud and somebody else's idea of loud are two different things. And when, you can hear it from Green Street to all the way down the opposite end of the other street, I would say the decibels are pretty loud. They're cranking those JBLs. So I know for me, I don't particularly, when I got to get up to go to work or do my activities, want to be listening to that at two, three o'clock in the morning. And it's a residential area. Most people are working, have to get up and do their daily things. So I am in opposition to this. I don't have a problem with people wanting to have a business. I'm a business owner myself. And, you know, I understand wanting to make a living, but there's places to do that and there's places to purchase land to do that, but not in a residential area. So I thank you guys for your time.
Okay, see if anybody has a question, Ms. Carmichael? Anyone? Okay, anyone else in the audience like to speak either in favor or against? Yes, ma'am?
Can I say just one more thing? Also, so my house is right here, right directly behind it is multi-complex apartments. I don't know if you're familiar with this, with the area. I mean, I would think that you're, the city of Longview and you're downtown quite a bit. So I'm hoping that you travel to our area that does have, you know, its challenges. And I just want you to take note also that our area directly behind it is all duplexes. So we get a lot of traffic already from there coming all the way around to Green Street. Green Street already has a, we have students that travel down that road. The bus already has difficulty getting up and down that road for those kids to come out safely when they're, you know, being dropped off from school. So I think that's also something that needs to be considered since it is not the widest street. Any questions?
Anyone else have any questions? Anyone else in the audience like to speak either in favor or against? If not, I'm closing the public hearing and I will call for a motion.
I move to deny.
We have a motion to deny. Do I hear a second?
A second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimously is rejected. Agenda, item C.
Thank you. Public hearing be held to consider application Z twenty-five dash thirteen filed by the city of Longview requesting a rezone from planned development P two to general retail zoning for abstract four of the IC Skilleran survey, tract ninety-four, section five, located at eight hundred Gilmer Road. So staff is requesting a rezone of this property located at the corner of Gilmer Road and Fairmont Street. It used to be a bank, but now the county has purchased that property and is looking at doing an addition to this property. Because it is a planned development, they have to come back through and rezone it and either amend the planned development or rezone out of it, whatever is appropriate. It's appropriate to rezone out of it since there's general retail to the north as well as, let me get back to the zoning map. There's general retail to the north as well as to the east of this property. And so therefore, it is consistent with our future land use map and surrounding uses. It does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
The only question I have, Angela, is, you know, the county's had parking problems where they are now.
Yes, sir.
Is the county own that additional lot? Are they going to expand the parking into there?
They just own what you see here in the green. I believe it's been a few weeks since I've looked at the site plan, but they are proposing additional parking and they'll have a drive-through lane as well. I believe they'll have three drive-through lanes for people to pay their taxes and do other items.
It's just curiosity.
Yes, sir.
It has nothing to do with the planning and zoning. Anybody else have any questions of Angela? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I will call for a vote.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Angela, we need an update.
Thank you. There were four zoning items that were presented to council and all four of them were approved.
All right. I will say that the meeting is now adjourned.